Good evening, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janutus?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Kochi?
Here.
And Spinks.
Can I have, excuse me, can I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Spinks by Miesak, second by Rhodes? Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of January 21st, 2019. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Miesak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of January 21st, 2019. Corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janutus, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
For first time in a long time, no old business, that's good. Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick reminders, just want to let everybody know that we are having our annual State of the City address. It'll be held next Thursday, February 13th. Doors open at 11:30, you can go online, all the information's on our website, if you want to purchase tickets for lunch, it's online. You can also show up, presentation should start about 12:30 and there'll be seating for everyone if you choose not to come for lunch.
In addition- It's free to come.
Free to come, correct, thank you, Mayor, free to come.
Accept the meal.
Accept the meal. If you're unable to make it, it will be videotaped and we'll have it up online, it'll be on our YouTube channel as well as our website. So, a lot of good, positive information that we are excited to share. I also want to give a quick reminder, last meeting we talked about the program guide that went out through our Parks and Recreation Department, if you didn't get a chance to see it, there's some extras up here. Happy to say we're experiencing a lot of registration, we have over 100 and some registrations that have taken place just within the last two weeks, a lot of different programs for many different ages, all the way from the little ones, all the way up to our seniors. So, if you're interested in it, take advantage of them, sign up, there's a lot of great options there. Again, on the back of that mailing, it does advertise, we're going to have a town hall meeting on Saturday, March 21st, down at Ellwood, at 10:00 AM, and that is to obviously hear input from the public, what programs would you like to see as we work towards putting together our fall and winter program guide? So, take a look at that. I just want to take a minute and thank Assistant Chief Sean Solar in our fire department, Sean is going to be retiring. He has been a tremendous asset to Bedford, a tremendous asset for our fire department and, you know, it's been an honor to call him a coworker and I wish him well and his family well. If you see him, give him a good pat on the back because he, we're going to hate to see him go. With that being said, I just want to thank the Civil Service Commission, I want to thank Frank Ambosi, who's been working to, who did conduct an assistant chief test, they conducted assistant chief test and working to certify those results, which will be, which is the next step for us to move forward in selecting Sean's replacement. So, that should be taking place very, very soon. Quick reminder that we do have our upcoming ward meetings as well, ward meetings, again, that's a quick opportunity, we give a quick presentation of some things happening in town, but we also open up the door to hear from all of you. We'll be here with your council representative, the mayor, and each of the department heads and you can ask individual questions, if there's things that you're curious about with the police or if it's Parks and Rec, it's a great opportunity for us to hear from you. Our meetings are going to be on March 23rd, which will be wards one and four, March 30th will be wards three and five, and April 27th will be wards two and six. And if you can't make your specific ward, you can come to another meeting, they're going to be pretty much the same information, just come. And again, we will have them videoed and those will as well be on our YouTube channel as well as on our website. And lastly, we are working with Dominion's contractor regarding the main gas line replacement that's taking place specifically in the area of Five Points. There is going to be some road closures only for the evening, each closure should only happen for one night, and they're going to be working from 7:00 PM to 4:00 AM to try to limit traffic or congestion as much as possible. So, what that means is, you know, the one evening they're going to be working on Columbus, near Five Points, they have to open cut that road to lay the new gas line, while they're doing that, that section will be closed. The next evening they may be at Center, the next evening will be at Broadway. They cannot bore through that area to put the new line in, there is just way too many public utilities, our utilities, other utilities, and the risk of them hitting that and causing a much larger issue is pretty high if they bore through it, so they need to open cut that road and that's why there will be some closures. So, we're going to try to limit the disturbance as far as with traffic, so that's why it's happening in the evening. And again, bear with us as we work with them to get that wrapped up as quickly as possible. And that is end of report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, I also wish Sean, enjoyed working with Sean Solar and wish nothing but luck. Also, there was two retirements at, from the courts, Jamie DeFabiola, the chief bailiff, retired on Friday, and Flo Jacklets, one of the clerks, also retired, so I enjoyed working with them as well and wish them nothing but luck. End of report.
Thank you. Finance Director.
In line with civil service and the Assistant Fire Chief, yes, I wish Sean very good luck and great retirement. We did prepare the Assistant Fire Chief test, the lieutenant test for fire and the entry level. We're at this point in time looking to replace all of those different positions, and we have the lists ready to go for those. We're also going to do a police entry early this year, get the word out, we'll be probably doing that sometime in June is what, maybe late June to get that test going, so already making plans in that nature. We'll also probably have an entry on Fire Medic later in the year, maybe in October, our list is dwindling on that too as well. So, we have to always plan in advance of work, our people are going in retirements and we want to make sure that we're ready when the time comes. So, we'll probably be looking at those types of tests coming up this year also. Also, in regards to, one thing I'd like to advertise is the Fun Run coming up and the Pancake Breakfast and the Art Show.
Talk about it.
We're going this year with that event on Saturday instead of Sunday, it'll be April 25th, 2020, it's a great event, you can go out, have a run, come in, eat breakfast and look at all that art all day. Invite everyone out to that at the Bedford High School, again, that's April 25th, I just wanted to mention that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. I just want to thank Frank for mentioning that the Pancake Run also has an art show, which is really neat, so it kind of gets outplayed somewhat with the excitement of the pancakes and the running and whatnot, but you have all the schools represented, all these kids have artwork and there's, you know, hundreds of them and they just do a beautiful job having their artwork in the basketball arena at the same time as the Pancake Breakfast, so, you know, I would encourage everyone to go and support the kids and see the artwork they're doing as well as enjoy the pancakes. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. While we're speaking about schools, last Friday we had a 20-year anniversary for the 2000 basketball team that went to the state finals, I happen to have been an assistant coach on that team and they introduced us at halftime and they did a fantastic job of getting some of the former players, the only downfall was, these kids are 38 years old now, that just made me feel like, anyhow, seeing them at their age now, but they did a great job and I want to thank their athletic director, Mark Zofka, he did a real good job and it was good seeing all the guys and stuff and so. And also, Mike, I know we haven't talked much about roads this year, and I'm going to have to say something about some certain road, Northfield Road. From Forbes Road down to the bridges, and I've been on here two years and I've been begging you for money, this year I'm really begging you for some money to resurface that somehow, because it's bad, and we need help somehow because it's just too many holes and we've been digging up, a lot of things have been breaking up there with, you know, all the pipes and everything else and it's just, it looks like, you know, a rodent Iraq, basically, and it needs to be addressed if we have the time and the money this year to get that to improve.
So, I'm glad you did bring up Northfield. We, a few years back, about three years ago, we reached out to ODOT, we actually had a meeting with ODOT officials regarding a couple of different concerns, unfortunately, all of which responsibility of ODOT, Northfield Road, Broadway, and the Northfield Road Bridge, okay? Obviously, I think we, for those of you that may recall, you know, we brought up some concerns regarding that fencing with them, unfortunately, we didn't see any results regarding some of those concerns. The officials in District 12 have since been replaced and there's a new management with ODOT. We actually have a meeting scheduled with them next Monday, and those are the three main topics of concern. One is the condition of Northfield Road and when is the timeline for them to address, make some addressing of Northfield Road. Second item of concern is that fencing along Northfield Road Bridge. They came back to us initially and stated that it's the city's responsibility to maintain normal maintenance. I can see Clint Beller and Sean Francis, they took over 100 and some photos, it is, that is beyond normal maintenance, there's actually, you know, pieces of concrete that are off and those are repairs that we cannot make in-house. We've actually asked them for quotes and we were unable to get a quote to prove that obviously it's beyond normal maintenance. And the third item of discussion is twofold, one, it is the increased traffic on Broadway due to the construction on the highway, we have experienced increased traffic, but two, what that traffic has done to the condition of Broadway, and what are they going to do to make that right? When is Broadway going to be on that list as well? So, I'm glad you brought it up, we're aware of some of those concerns and we want to have a conversation with them and we plan to do so. Our engineer set up the meeting, he'll be there, Clint will be there, and myself, so hopefully I'll have a follow-up for council after that meeting. But I agree with you, for sure.
End of report. Thank you. Mrs. Miesak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, how are you? Good evening, everybody, it's nice to see everybody here on this more or less like spring night today. We are going to have six, no, we won't be going into spring early this year, no long winter, thank goodness, but since Vic mentioned his 20-year reunion with the basketball players, I'm a little bit older, so here it goes, February 15th, which will be a week from this Saturday, is the annual Senior Citizens Valentine Day Dance at the high school from 12 till 3 o'clock. And that's usually a crowd puller for all of us that can make it through the spell, which, oh, we don't get, and we do have a good time and we enjoy ourselves, and some of us even get to move our bones around and try to dance. My next question is to Mike, and I was asked the other day, how many people does Exilia employ as of today compared to when they first came in?
Yeah, I don't have the exact, the exact numbers, but that site, I believe, early last year-
211.
Yeah, but then if you add in the other company, they were probably closer to 250, 260, but-
I think they're around 200, that's right.
Yeah, they were about 250, 260, and once they do get the new bag system up and running, they are planning to hire a decent amount more, but they need to get that system up, which is what the construction is taking place right now.
And the other question would be, how is the new van service working out for the seniors and for people that use it?
It's actually working out very well, we've actually, each month we've seen an increase of people utilizing that service. We have, I believe to date, we have close to 70 individuals that have been registered, 30 of those individuals, well, I should say, just shy of 30, are new users that didn't have the ability to use it beforehand. When we were running our van service last year, I believe there was between 40 and 50 people signed up, but to be quite honest with you, we were servicing on a regular basis, it was about the same 15 to 20 individuals. So, it is, it's working out and each month we get more people signed up, which is then the goal.
That's good, because we had a few people that called over to us and I directed them to set up the appointments, and I'm looking over at the audience tonight, it kind of makes me feel a little missed, but even though they're not here, my people at Economy Club were thinking of you and we're doing our best to take care of what things we can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming. So, I have something to play for you, because I'd like you all to go online and watch this, see if it's going to play for me now. That's what you should be thinking right now. So, right now we are selling tickets for our Chocolate Walk, we did actually just produce a commercial for our Chocolate Walk, if you go to YouTube and type in Bedford Chocolate Walk, you can find it and watch it. Our business owners came together and sang for us so that we can help promote this event. It is a lot of fun, if you've never been to a Chocolate Walk, it's a little bit like trick-or-treating for grownups, you pay for your ticket, you come to, on the day of the event, we'll give you a map and a bag and you walk around and at each one of the stops, you get a piece of candy in your bag. We also have a game that you play while you're walking around, if you find all of the golden tickets in Bedford Downtown, you'll then be entered into a drawing for a grand prize. Tickets are $20 apiece, you can purchase those tickets at BedfordDowntown.org/chocolate or you can go to Cernos Cafe or the Broadway Cyclopes and purchase them in person, I'm also taking money tonight if you'd like to purchase them from me. We are also looking for volunteers, volunteers work a two-hour shift, if you volunteer, you can then purchase your tickets for the Chocolate Walk at half price, so you can work two hours and spend the other two hours doing the Chocolate Walk in downtown, and it does take about two hours to complete. So, I do want to, again, remind everyone that we're doing a wine pool at this Chocolate Walk, if you're not familiar with the wine pool, it is a lot of fun, you may have noticed at events that you've gone to in the past, that the most popular event is the basket with a bottle of wine, we decided to skip the middleman, so as you get a wine pool ticket, you get to pull a bottle of wine, that bottle of wine will be worth at least the value of the ticket, but there are several bottles in there mixed in as well that's worth more than the $20 a ticket costs. So, our grand prize is a bottle of Angel's Envy Sherry Cask Bourbon, this is a rare bourbon, it was purchased for $200, but it's currently valued at 450. So, you have the opportunity, it's a one out of 45 chance to pull that bottle of bourbon. So, we hope to see you there either as volunteers or as attendees, and again, I appreciate your attention, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
All right, I got a couple things tonight, the first one being, are we still patrolling for our rubbish? Because, not so much, well, although there's quite a few people that leave their cans out for two, three days again, it seems like they've forgotten that we patrolled that earlier in the year, but the people that are putting it out early, for instance, we have one at the top of Ennis Hill on the south side of the road, it's been out since yesterday and they don't get picked up till Wednesday. It would be nice if we looked into that again, just to remind people that, especially in the wintertime, it becomes a hazard because the stuff blows all over and when the snow melts, we're picking up rubbish everywhere. The next thing happens to be is our intersection, Five Points, with the gas company, what type of restoration are they going to do to that intersection or are we going to end up with trenches all over the place? It would be nice if they did the intersection like they did at Taylor in Broadway when they were finished, for this one too, do you know?
I don't have the specifics, I know they're not with our city engineer and service department, but they understand what has to get done as far as, you know, obviously doing it according to our specs and what needs to happen with it, so. Okay, if we lost that, I'll follow up to make sure that it doesn't and they have those plans that our engineer and service are satisfied with. We also have inspectors out through the entire time during this project and actually Dominion reimburses us for those inspectors, so they're not doing any work with our inspectors not being present.
Okay, the other thing is, are they going to run the traffic signals through that area because that traffic, even though they're working at night, it'd be nice if somebody was controlling those signals to make sure people can get in and out around their traffic too.
They'll have traffic control because you won't be able to get through those roads.
Well, you can't shut the intersection down, that's a state highway.
And certain streets will be blocked, Broadway won't be blocked because there's multiple lanes, but when they're doing the work at Columbus, you're not going to be able to go down Columbus and get onto Broadway, you're going to be redirected and that'll take place further up.
Have you notified the businesses in the area that this is going to occur?
They were sending all that information out, yeah.
I'm a little shocked, but I have actually asked about this stuff.
Okay, and at the same time, I hope someone has contacted Sherwood because especially at night, they run their trucks through that area, maybe it'll slow them down a little because they seem to go a little bit fast through that area, but Sherwood should be notified that the construction will be going on in the evenings when most of their trucks seem to go back and forth. And of course, the last thing is, I'm not a proponent of red light cameras, and this has been brought up at a couple different council meetings lately, but the corner of Columbus and Northfield Road, man, more and more people are running that signal, I was up there three times in just the last week and more than two cars ran it, not yellow, but red. They are going through that intersection like you wouldn't believe, we could make a fortune putting up a red light camera at that intersection, and I'm not really a proponent of red light cameras or any speed cameras, but man, this intersection's got to have something done before we have a major catastrophe over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have one, one item, again, thanks, everybody, for being here, just wanted to say happy birthday to my wife, today is her birthday, and as a special birthday present, she just picked up her 16th free car from Mary Kay.
Oh, wow.
She's awesome. She is one of the nicest, most hardworking people I've ever met and I'm glad she grabbed me.
Is that a pink Cadillac?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's silver Malibu. I don't, I don't know, pink is nice, it could be whatever color for free, every two years she gets a new one. Anyhow, but she earned it and happy birthday to her. Let's move on with new business. Ordinance number 9752-20.
Is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, otherwise known as NOPEC, 2020 Energized Community Grant and declaring an emergency?
Motion for suspension by Lou Hardy, second by Janutus, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Miesak, second by Rhodes. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a, as stated, NOPEC grant offered to the cities, we actually were successful last year in acquiring a $45,000 grant, this is a similar grant, just around $43,000. We escrowed last year's funds in order to combine it with this year's grant application to give us the most, as much money as possible to make various energy improvements. The improvements are for energy upgrades to municipal buildings and/or streetlights, things of that nature, so we did work with a company last year and we actually performed an energy audit of all of our buildings and we have breakdowns of what improvements need to be made, what could be made, what is that payback timeframe, so we'll be coming to council in the next couple months with some recommendations on some improvements that will be funded through last year and then this grant, so kudos to Jen Kuzma who worked to write the application, she's did a great job.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9753-20.
Providing for the adoption of new matters in our ordinances that were passed last year, well, since October 2019 through January of this year, replacing those ordinances that need updating, repealing certain portions of them and that may be in conflict therewith or deemed obsolete and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Saunders, call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Lou Hardy, second by Janutus. Mike?
Basically, we're just updating our ordinances, the changes that we've made, so we have to, we use a service for that, so we have to authorize the expenditure of monies and for the cost of, you know, the replacement pages, and that's basically all it is, is just updating our ordinances to changes that we are mandated by the state of Ohio or that council has mandated previously.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9754-20.
Mending ordinance number 9658-18, establishing pay ranges as subsequently amended and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Miesak, second by Rhodes, call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Janutus, second by Lou Hardy. Frank?
Yeah, we have two positions that we have in the city program coordinator and building clerk where we had to classify that for pay ranges for entry as well as life insurance clarification that we needed in the ordinance, as council approved that this evening.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Place long motion, though, if you read, I mean.
Motion to accept our Board of Zoning Appeals recommendation of January 28th of this year regarding Dustin James representing education alternatives, which was, which approved a variance of sign size for one wall sign per street, not to exceed 40 square feet in an area, and the approved wall signage consists of sunburst totaling 16.80 square feet and illuminating letters reading "Education Alternatives" totaling 35.282 square feet for a total of 52.62 square feet when the code requires 40, so they need to go before the board for the, to get the bigger sign, basically.
And can I have a motion for such, this is a yes/no, both yes, you agree with the planning board, and a no would be you disagree with them. Can I have a motion for such, by Lou Hardy, second by Janutus, call the roll. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And Kochi?
Yes.
And now we come to that part for the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment, and please try to keep your comments to five minutes.
Your honor, did not hurt.
Our esteemed board member.
Hip-Tech 286 Marion Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank all the council members for mentioning the Pancake Run, Walk, and Breakfast and all that, the art show. It's in conjunction with the Bedford City School Foundation, which supplies scholarships for seniors, and it's one of our three fundraisers of the year, and they do the art department, all our teachers and everybody do a wonderful job, and we've got some very talented students up there. So come on up and support our students on April 25th. This is the first time, it's been on a Saturday for quite a while, we've been trying to get some more attendance, so we thought we'd move it to a Saturday and see how that works out. But, so keep that in mind. As I did see your halftime, thank you, very well done. Kudos on that.
Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Sean Solar on his retirement. He was like a brother to my brother, and so it's a kind of an end of an era for our family. I know there's a few guys left that were on the department when Terry was there, but he was a very special guy for us and our family. So all the best to him and his future endeavors. And last but not least, I was, one of the business owners asked me Saturday, I think it was, downtown, he mentioned something about graffiti in the area, and I said, I said, we'll go to a council meeting while you see I'm here. So, and I know that there was, years ago, there was a saying that we'll, they'll run out of paint before we run out of paint. So are we still, is that basically how we work it?
So we are aware of the issue. It's, we've had several locations hit in the downtown area. The building owners have been notified, and they have been asked to clean up. We also have a special attention on the area to try to catch, we believe, what are juveniles doing this. So we're working on it. The business owners, most of them have contacted us back and said that they're working on getting that graffiti removed from their buildings.
Okay, so is, then am I to understand it's the building owner's responsibility?
Private property.
That's okay. What happens if they don't? You put the squeeze on them? I mean, okay.
I talked to an owner today, and they, they tried everything to get rid of it. Self-care teeth, take it off, hasn't done it, so I know they're trying.
We actually, one thing that, you learn something new every day, I guess. We spoke to two of the property owners, and they said, the proper material that you need to use to remove graffiti, it says right on the container, it will not work under 40 degrees. And we looked it up, we verified it, they're right, and they said, listen, we have it, we tried it, it didn't work, we're waiting for it to warm up. Hopefully, they're out there today.
I just want to make sure that, I mean, I'm sure we have a program, because it's not prolific in the area. Thank God for that. I mean, I know somebody's staying on top of it, but I don't know if it was our responsibility or whatever, so.
Yeah, and some of the public areas, like we've gone out, and, you know, they've done the, on the bridge.
Right.
Or they've done, you know, over Powers, we've gone out there, we will have it the very next day.
That's what I told them. I said, well, I made them known, especially like on the bridge of Powers Road and the bridge on Northfield, I mean, you're on that, that paint wasn't even dry, and it wasn't going off, so.
Right. We continue to do that. If you see something, let us know. On private property, we can't go on private property, but we notify them, as long as we're working with them. Listen, we need it addressed. If they don't, then we'll escalate it to get it addressed sooner than later.
One of the issues that's happening right now is a lot of these tags are happening on bare brick. So they don't want to paint over top of bare bricks, so.
I get it, I know. All right, thank you.[1767.33]